And get going. First on every agenda is public comment. If you're here to comment on something that is not on our agenda, now is the time to do that. Is anybody here for that reason? No. If you're here to comment on anything, when you do, please come to that microphone because it's hooked up to the FCTV thing. And that's the way people at home hear what you have to say. It's not a real microphone, and these aren't either, but it's about the TV. So if you're gonna speak, please go over there, and when you do, state your name and your purpose. Okay, next. Minutes, Paul.
I recommend approval of the minutes of October 25th and November 1st, 2022 as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, thank you. First on our agenda, we have approval not required on A&R plan. The applicant is James Joyce, plan of land for a combination and re-division of 89 and 107 Metoxit Road in Wacoite from two lots to three lots. Jed, who is speaking for that?
I don't know if the applicant is here.
Mr. Clawer, please.
Hi, everyone. Record Kevin Clawer. I am an attorney here with Amen Clawer Lawroom in Falmouth. And I am here on behalf of the applicant, Joyce Thames. James Joyce, it's not Ulysses, but Joyce Thames is the applicant. We're here tonight on behalf of the applicant. We're seeking to have a slight subdivision of these, not subdivision, a slight A&R approval of these two lots. Right now, this property here, this larger parcel, is one lot. We would like to take off 5,000 square feet from the lot to the south, which has been agreed to, and add it to this lot, which will allow for a subdivision of this into two separate lots. Land Court has approved this, subject to the planning board's A&R approval. If the planning board feels fit to approve this, once we have the signed Mylar, that'll be submitted to Land Court for their review as well.
And the purpose of this is to create three rather than two lots?
Exactly.
And they are the owners of all of that land under all three?
This lot is under separate ownership, but this portion of it is subject to a purchase and sale agreement, of which this is a condition.
Planning Board, any comments or questions?
No.
No? No? And...
The only thing, we have to make sure it's not, it's all building permits and everything is separate, we're just approving this, because it's got wetlands, it's got all kinds of things, they got a lot of work to do on other things that are not our purview.
That are not under this board at all?
Right.
But they will come up when they go to see the building commissioner and look forward for that. So it means our requirements for an A&R. So can we have a motion for approval?
I move.
To endorse.
To endorse, right. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who was that?
I'm really glad you didn't have any other questions, because I just told you everything I know, because I'm covering this for someone else. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's get to admit that once in a while.
Keeps you on your toes.
Okay, next.
Meaning you're not coming back for a while?
Ah, Pam, welcome. That's okay. Now, we're moving on. Again, it's Amen Clawer for Marion Santos Donald, a site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment at 124 Ambleside Drive. We have heard this, we have a decision, and Bob, I wonder, I believe we closed the hearing on it, and Bob, we are going to hear the decision.
Okay. Draft 11/28/22. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Donald Mary Ellen Santos to construct an attached accessory apartment at 124 Ambleside Drive under Article 39 Site Plan Review zoning by law for a plan entitled Proposed Accessory Apartment 124 Ambleside Drive West Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Engineering Works, Inc., scale of 1 inch equals 30 feet, dated July 13, 2022, along with elevation and floor plans entitled Donald Residence, Falmouth, Mass., eight sheets, prepared by Salt Architecture, scale of 3/16ths of an inch equals 1 foot, dated September 7, 2022, as well as existing dwelling photos with the following findings. The 25,560-square-foot lot is located in the residence BRB zoning district, the coastal pond, West Falmouth Harbor overlay district, and the wildlife corridor foraging area two overlay district. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit above the existing garage. Following construction, the property will have a total of five bedrooms, four bedrooms in the principal dwelling, and one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit above the garage. The proposed accessory dwelling unit, proposed at 728 square feet, will be 31% of the principal dwelling, and the property will provide four parking spaces which comply with Section 240-23I, 3E, and Section 240-10108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. Are there any different conditions other than the, what's in the bylaw? So I'll refrain from reading all of those.
Standard conditions.
Yeah.
Standard.
Standard conditions, okay.
And those will be included with the standard conditions in the minutes. I think this is a good time, oh, first let's take our vote. That's the proposal, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Through the discussion? No, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the vote carries, that's good. This is a good time to point out, people who might not be familiar with it, many of the findings are just standard language, and we keep repeating them and repeating them and repeating them, so that we asked the town planner and the town council to please review the law on this matter and find out, do we really need to do that? No, we don't. So in the future, we will not be doing that. We're going to have an abbreviated thing that will identify the piece of property, identify the action that we're taking, identify any special conditions that are not standard, so that they will be heard, they will be out to the public, spoken, and so forth. The entire finding will become part of the record and be in the minutes, but we will not have to read the whole thing. And that process will begin at our next meeting, so that what we'll be getting is the abbreviated one. We'll see the whole thing, we get an abbreviated one, we take our vote, or we wait for a full motion that reflects our conditions, whichever. So there'll be a change in the process.
Okay.
Any questions about that? That could be a nice improvement. All right, public hearing is next. Paul, do we have a notice?
Notice of public hearing for Deep Pond Road Change was published on November 11, 2022, and November 18, 2022, and twelve of others were notified by regular mail. Thank you.
Okay. So we are being asked to change a road's name from Deep Pond Road to Deep Pond Drive. Jed, do you have the comments that came from the engineering division and the emergency communications division?
Sure. So for the record, Jed Kornak, town planner. What you're looking at here, and maybe I could set the table a bit better, this is Deep Pond Road, located in the Hatchville Village, runs from Hatchville Road west over to Sam Turner Road, and it actually has this little deviation that runs north. For clarity's sake, just down here is Deer Pond Road, and this is the other road that I believe the applicant is indicating, is creating some confusion, because Deep Pond and Deer Pond are very similar in their, in the way they sound and the way they're spelled. What you have in your packets is this document here, which I will zoom into. This is from our engineering division. As you know, we send this application to several town departments, and what we heard back from the engineering division was, as I will read on the screen, they're in support of changing the name of Deep Pond Road since it's similar to Deer Pond. However, they do recommend entirely different name as Deep Pond Drive, which is what the applicant is asking it be changed to, is simply still too similar to Deer Pond Road. And then they made another observation that, you know, I just pointed out on the map, is that this, this image is actually an image from a subdivision plan that was approved by the planning board back in 1961. And what it shows is that, you know, there's Deep Pond Road here, but this is also Deep Pond, and if there were to be a name change, they would recommend that there be two name changes, so that this road and this road be different names to further reduce any confusion in this particular subdivision or this particular neighborhood. And so that summarizes the comments from the engineering division. We didn't put the communications center comments on the screen, but in essence, what they said was, they didn't in their history know of any public safety issues related to the confusion of the street names. However, they agreed with the engineering division that changing it from Deep Pond Road to Deep Pond Drive isn't enough of a change to really reduce any confusion. And so those are the comments that you have in your packet.
Any questions from Jim?
We don't have an application to change it to the other name. Have they, have these departments made an application to go with a different name?
So a person who lives on the road submitted a letter asking to change the name from Deep Pond Road to Deep Pond Drive.
Well, I've got that, but what, being recommended by town committees, we don't have an application for that, so we have nothing to vote on that. Or are they saying we should deny this?
Right, that's in essence what they're saying.
Yeah.
Because it isn't, doesn't clear enough.
Correct. Yep.
I'd volunteer to have it named after me.
So the applicant hasn't responded to those comments. Is anyone here from the public to speak on this issue? Yes. Okay, great. We'll take turns by whoever's closest to the microphone first.
My name is Ann McKinney. I'm a resident of Deep Pond Road, and I wanted to comment that the names Deer and Deep have been excellent since the 1960s, and it hasn't been an issue for clarity between the two for over 55 years. And there are many roads in town that have very similar names, and again, as I said, that it hasn't been an issue. The Road and Drive appellations were sort of loosey-goosey, if you will, until 911 was activated on the Cape in the 1990s. And at that point, Road became the official designation for Deep Pond Road, just to make, you know, to make it clear, and so that emergency vehicles and responses could be appropriate. And they wanted to make it something set at that point. There is an error in some navigation software, which has given rise to continuing to use Drive instead of the Road that was designated in the 1990s, and that does lead to some confusion with packages being delivered and that sort of thing. But that's not insurmountable. There was not an issue with this until this summer, when DPW sent out letters to all the residents asking that the sign that Peggy Elder, one of the applicants, had made and is on the Hatchville entrance to the Road, and she made the sign and made it Deep Pond Drive. The town sign for the Road, which is on the Sam Turner end, is Deep Pond Road. And so they said that the sign that Peggy made needs to be either corrected or removed. I went by DPW and asked them what kind of solutions, whether they could patch up that sort of thing, and they said yes, they could, and that Peggy was out of town until, for the whole summer, so I didn't have a chance to approach her and tell her that until later on. I'm very much against this change. I think there would be huge costs and hassles incurred for all the residents and for the town. The town would have to change the tax bills, excise, RMB, the maps would have to be changed, the water bills, the voter registration, dog licenses, and emergency services would always also have to be changed, and I believe the town would incur cost for that. Also, if it were changed, the residents of the town would have to have the sign on the Sam Turner end changed and replaced, I believe, at their cost. For the homeowners, they would have to have their deeds, their mortgages, their equities, their wills, all their financial documents, all have to be changed, re-signed, notarized, and refiled with the county at great cost, and many of these would incur legal fees. And you'd have to file a change of address to anyone who sends you mail, and the registry of motor vehicles, your smart ID, your passport, your voter registration, your social security, your financial entities, and government documents, especially are hard to change. Your insurance policies would have to be changed and rewritten, and even my dog would have to have her microchip reprogrammed to Drive as opposed to Road. So this, it's a huge, huge undertaking for both the town and the individuals to make this change, just because I believe Peggy doesn't want to change her sign. And I believe if it were changed back to Drive, that that would wind up giving rise even more confusion than what has existed in the past. Bob and Peggy are only in residence for a few days per year, and so I don't know why they should be able to make it difficult for the year-round residents. And so I heartily encourage you to deny the change to Deep Pond Drive for safety, clarity, expense, and just common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You've made a lot of points. Next.
Hi, my name is Genoa Langnickel, and I am here on behalf of Bob and Peggy Elder, who are also my parents. They are out of town at the moment, though they are residents of Falmouth, and they do spend quite a bit of time in Falmouth. They have been traveling as they are, as they have retired. However, 34 Deep Pond Road is their primary residence. I do want to make a comment that all of our paperwork, including our driver's licenses and passports, also do say Deep Pond Drive. It's never been an issue with changing it with the RMB or any of mortgages in the banks and that type of thing. I do believe that Deep Pond Drive is a big enough difference from Deer Pond Road to make it worth that change. I would like to encourage you to accept that change. We have never had issues in regards to making two different road names. We've never had issues of people coming onto Deep Pond Road looking for, well, they get confused between the Road and the Drive. However, on that, I live on the little extension, and we haven't had any issues of not being able to find our home or other people's homes. We have had issues of packages and such going to Deer Pond, or of FedEx and other delivery drivers stopping outside of my house, looking for particular addresses, and then realizing that they are looking for Deer Pond Road and not Deep Pond Road. It's an inconvenience. It's not huge, but it is an inconvenience, but the biggest concern is the safety issue with emergency vehicles and looking for Deer Pond Road instead of Deep Pond Road. And we do believe that Deep Pond Drive does create enough of a difference without creating an abnormal amount of hassle for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Did you say your license says Deer Pond Drive?
No, Deep Pond Drive.
Deep Pond Drive.
Would you like to...
Your license says that?
Yes, would you like to see it?
No, I'm pretty sure it's, why would you use Deep Pond Drive if the name of the road is Deep Pond?
It's because for as long as, so I, I lived there as a child, and then I moved away and I returned, and for as long as my parents have owned that house, we have always thought it was Deep Pond Drive. There was a large wooden sign that was at the end of the road that said Deep Pond Drive that somebody made over 30 years ago. My mother recently replaced it because it was starting to peel, and you couldn't see the road name clearly because it was starting to come off, so my mother made a new sign to replace it to make sure that it was visible.
Okay.
Does that answer? We always thought it was Drive. We didn't know...
Google Maps thinks it's Drive.
Google Maps says it's Drive, the RMB says it's Drive.
Drive?
Google Maps says it's Drive, the...
Why did the...
Our mortgage says it's Drive.
Why do the digital documents say Road?
Not all of them say that.
I, I know that ours do. I don't, I haven't seen everybody else's on...
I think we got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Neil Curry for Deep Pond Road. Just to continue that conversation, my family's been there for 58 years. I live in a family home, and there was nothing in my life that is Deep Pond Road. Everything I have is Deep Pond Drive. Mortgage, licenses, credit card, library card, everything. So that's how, you know, it's been, it was a source of confusion back then, but so it was 1964 when we moved in. I'll concur, just last week, I went to Deer Pond Road, picked up a package, and I live on the corner, on 4, corner of Sam Turner, and we constantly have people pull in, you know, turn around the driveway looking for Deer Pond. So that's a nuisance, so that always leads me to believe that, you know, that could happen with, with public service or first responders. I mean, you said that there was no instances that they have on record, but that would be a concern, but I can just expand on that. 58 years, there's nothing. And, I mean, I'm not really riled up about this, but to me, it feels like we're changing it to Deep Pond Road, you know, because it's always been Deep Pond Drive, you know. And I actually, I'm a little concerned about my real ID if I have to change everything. I haven't gotten that yet, that's definitely a concern.
And you're saying it's Drive?
To have to change, or to...
And you're saying...
Make it Road, I don't know, you know. Like I said, it's a little confusing because it's always been Deep Pond Drive.
And your paperwork now is in Drive, right?
Everything I, everything.
Any idea how many other people on those, that street have Deep Pond Drive? Yeah, so I wonder if it's just been...
I have a road.
Yeah, and which section do people, do all these folks live on? Because I'm wondering if it's one of these branches, because you said you live on Sam Turner and...
Mr. and Mrs. Ron, they're on here. Right up in here.
Okay, so it's all over.
Yeah.
Jeezus.
Wow. I never knew, I didn't know about it in the 90s. I just knew about it until I got, when we got the letter from the engineer. I did notice the sign, I always thought that was wrong, the street sign.
Okay.
We have one street sign just on the Sam Turner side.
Yeah, Sam Turner side, I drive by it every day.
There has been confusion. Okay, could we hear what the others have to say?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It sounds similar.
I don't think this is getting cleared up.
No.
We're getting a deeper...
It's getting deeper and deeper.
All right, here we go. Craig Diponte, 64, Deep Pond Drive, born and raised there, just like Neil.
Did you point it out on the map?
So my house is right, is right there, and my parents' house is right here, Neil's house is there, there's Mike's, there's Genoa's.
Wow.
So all over.
So anyways, been there my whole life, my license says Deep Pond Drive, all my stuff says Deep Pond Drive. There has been a confusion periodically. The biggest issue today, lately, is more about packages, stuff like that. So you've got to assume if packages go to the wrong place, because you put Google, you put Drive, it shows up, my house there. Stuff goes to Deer Pond Drive all the time. My daughter had a, a friend gave her a ukulele from California, went to Deer Pond Drive. Deer Pond Road, sorry. And that happens all the time. I had, I had like four yards of bark mulch delivered from the guy from Deer Pond to my house by accident. So I pulled out the driveway, like, whoa, my wife ordered some bark mulch, where's that going? And the guy got halfway through, and I said, hey buddy, what's going on? And he's like, Deer Pond Drive, Deer Pond? I said, no, Deep Pond. And he's like, oh crap. But anyways, back to this, so it's, it's more of a safety thing, I would think, than anything.
I wonder if the people on that spur where it's red up there, how many of those might be Deep Pond Road? Because it seems like the two branches that, where you're at...
No matter what you do, that's going to be confusing. So if you, so...
Yeah.
What, when you mentioned that the, the engineering department said to change the whole thing, it would have been cool if we'd known that, because then we could have a whole big giant discussion on that. We'd all have named it after me and Neil and that kind of stuff, we'd have more fun, but there's not, that's not going to happen. So that's just way too complicated. And it's kind of like, you know, you grew up in Falmouth, you grew up in Hatchville. Hatchville's gone, you know, that is, I mean, it's, it exists, but it's East Falmouth, so I still have, I feel Hatchville in me.
Oh, yeah.
It's the same thing with Deep Pond Drive. You grew up there, you kind of want it the same.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have, there was the sign that Herb Riley made way back when, the one that's, that was, caused all this kerfuffle. So Herb made a sign way back when, said Deep Pond Drive, it's always been there. And, and what Genoa was saying is it started to fail, and she replaced it with a new one, and it said Drive, just like the old one. And the big, the big thing there was, should we put private or not, which we did not. I have a picture of the old sign, if you care to see it.
I don't know.
Okay. Jim?
Well, that's a good question. Is this a private road or a public road?
It's a private road.
Private road.
Private road.
So why are we involved?
We should poll the neighborhood, let them vote on it, and do whatever they want as a majority. It's not, I say, it's theirs.
Yeah, let them take it, I agree with you, let them take it back.
They should vote on it themselves.
Because it's not a life-threatening situation.
No.
I can see where it could be annoying.
It's too confusing.
But before we do that, one of the speakers was not speaking only for herself, she was speaking for an association, and I wonder if we could hear from her, how many people you represent when you say that, and do they all agree with what you said?
I didn't say I was speaking for an association instead of a resident.
Ah, okay, so...
I almost...
Bob?
I think, I just leave it as it is.
There's more.
And, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, but, but part of the problem, it seems like the biggest problem is packages, and if people just had a, with their address by their mailbox, whatever, just had the name of the road, so...
Oh, but the interesting there is the mailboxes are all up at the street, and it's a one-way little street.
But you could even have a sign at your house. I mean, I have a...
Yeah, no, I have a number on my house, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, a number, but also the name of the, the street. I mean, people put rocks and boulders with the number and the street name on it, you know, that might alleviate some of the confusion.
So your theory is to leave it the exact way it is?
Yeah, because I think you're getting into a hornet's nest.
What's the hornet's nest? Everybody wants it to be Drive.
Well, not everybody.
More people want it to be Drive.
We can problem solve for a long time.
Can I just make a point for a second?
Yes.
So the problem seems to be with packages from Deep Pond Road Drive to Deer Pond, so changing it from Road to Drive doesn't seem like it's going to make a difference from Deer Pond to Deep Pond.
No.
So it would either seem to have to be changed totally, or else just not, because according to our code, there, there has to be a reason for a change, certain reasons. You can't just change it because packages aren't getting delivered. It has to be a safety issue.
Well, I would think the packages are the tip of the iceberg as far as safety. I mean, if you, you know, if you...
But we've, we've contacted our dispatch, and they have never had a problem, so, and our, our fire department.
So if they never had a problem, what's the problem then? I mean, you just, if they never had a problem, then if we want to change, what's the problem? So there is no problem.
Because not everyone wants it changed.
But if most do...
It doesn't matter.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There are a lot of possible solutions here. We all may favor a different one. We're not going to resolve this here tonight, unfortunately, we don't have to, and it would be a very useful thing for your group of people who are really involved in this and going to be most affected by it, to take what engineering had to say to heart and have meetings there among people on the roadway, and come back to us with what you would like, or not, if you decide to keep it the same.
I'm not, I'm not the one in charge, so I guess I'll sit down, but I got it.
Yes, thank you. But I do want to ask, is there something you would like to add?
Did you have a question for me? You look like you were saying something.
Yeah. Is the zip code different?
No, zip code's the same.
No, it's all...
025, 36.
Oh, for Deer Pond and Deep Pond, zip code?
It's all East Falmouth. East Falmouth's got the biggest zip code you've ever seen.
Isn't, Deer Pond's 02536.
That's the street. 02540.
Oh, really?
Jeezus.
Pretty sure.
No, I'm pretty sure it's all...
I'm, I'm on Galette, and it's all...
Everything I know out there, East Falmouth.
You guys are all doing a good job.
Okay.
This has gotten out of hand.
My name's Mike Abbott, I'm at 25 Deep Pond Drive.
Okay.
I think that when you're thinking of the change, from my perspective, I've been there not, not as long as Neil or Morton was, but I've been there since 1996. And I've always thought it was Deep Pond Drive, and every, all of my paperwork is Deep Pond Drive as well. So the change is really to Deep Pond Road from our perspective. The other thing is, I think there's a scale issue here that you may or may not be aware of. This is a very small road. In fact, it's probably less than a quarter mile. It's a one-lane road. It's not, it's not really a road. By definition, it would be more of a drive, because that would, you know, drive connotes a smaller rural type access. It's definitely more of, in reality, more of a drive than a road. And in fact, you wouldn't want people coming through there in winter. It's, this portion right here that says Pond is extremely steep. For a long time, it was never even plowed in winter, and it was used as a kid's for sledding. But it's, it's a, it's not, it's not really a road. I mean, it's a drive. So, otherwise, I would just, you know, just basically repeat what people said, that it's tough from our perspective, has been, has been Deep Pond Drive. I didn't even know there was any, you know, to Anne's defense, though, the, the road sign by Neil's house does say Road. However, that's also on that curve coming off of Hatchville. I don't know if you've ever been out there, you're familiar with that. It's a crazy turn. And that road sign is knocked down regularly and is missing for long periods of time. It's, I mean, it's, I think it's a bad example of early American engineering, because it shouldn't be, like, the curve there at the end of the road shouldn't be like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any member of the board that's averse to having the neighborhood come to a different resol, or some resolution and either bring it back or not?
Anne, I was going to suggest that the, if this is a representation of your neighborhood, which is relatively small, I would suggest that you all get together and figure it out. Because, I mean, I'm listening to this and I'm thinking, a package here or there, or I honestly can't get my head around the major issue. But the cost of making all those changes with all of those entities seems a little crazy to me. But, again, if the neighbors want to do that, then I think they should get together, figure it out, and come back.
Well, I guess the question we would have then is, what type of, it wouldn't be unanimous because, because Anne is obviously very adamant about keeping it Road. And, and I think the rest of the very small neighborhood, as you can see, would, would, I don't want to speak to people that aren't here, but having spoke, having talked to them, would be to keep it the way it has been, which is Drive, not Road.
Yeah. Everybody just keep their own address.
John?
I think what Bob said, it makes a lot of sense. I don't see any reason for the change. It works for everybody on the street right now, other than a couple of packages. The main thing is the fire department, safety, and
Right.
and they're not concerned with the way it is set up right now.
Yeah.
So you'd rather
So if, if Road works for the young lady, which it does, and Drive works for the young men, which it does, I don't see the reason for a change.
I think, I think that, I think that's actually probably accurate. If, if there's no, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's
The town doesn't have a concern.
Um, just a moment. We're not going to hold the neighborhood meeting here.
Safety.
We're not. And we have a choice now. Bob, we can either turn it down, as John is suggesting, or we can return it to however you wish to define the neighborhood and decide what you want to do and come back.
Well, if we turn it down, they're going to do that anyway or not do it.
That's true.
So
Yeah. So
Jim?
I don't see an issue here at all. I've sold the house in the street, never had a problem with it. I, I think this is much ado about nothing and the biggest waste of time I've seen in a long time.
It's verging. Right. So, John, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to, to deny.
Madam Chair, may I make just a couple of comments?
Mm-hmm.
I just would like to
If you allow.
So there's a, there's a couple of things at, at play here. As I mentioned, this is a subdivision plan that was approved in the 1960s. It clearly indicates that this road name is to be Deer Pond Road.
Mm-hmm.
Wait a second. You just said Deer Pond Road.
Sorry.
That's what it is.
I apologize. I apologize. Deep Pond Road. So in order for them to change it to Deer, Deep Pond Drive, according to our town code, they would have to come before the planning board to do that. So I, I just wanted to address that, that whole idea of the neighborhood could decide and just change signs. The planning board has the authority to change that name. And as you can see in that approved subdivision plan, it is Deep Pond Road. So any change would have to come before the board. You'd have to authorize that. That's point number one. And I think for clarity's sake, I'm just going to give you a, a sense for why this could potentially be an issue. Because this sign here at the beginning, as everyone's talked about, indicates one road name, as you can see on the screen.
Mm-hmm.
And on this side of the road, it indicates a different one.
Keep going, keep going.
Elevator music.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Up here?
A little bit more. Just turn, turn, turn. It should be right there.
Yeah, it's back there.
So it indicates something different. Now, I think that what our public safety folks and engineering division were indicating was that it's important to clear up that confusion. One side says one thing, one says the other. Neighbors are claiming one way, neighbors are, some are claiming others. This indicates, our own GIS indicates it's Deep Pond Road. I can open up a Google map, but it clearly indicates Deep Pond Drive. So I think there's a lot of issues at play here that would need to be cleared up. And I just wanted to make those, those two points.
If the tax bills, what, what's the address on the tax bill?
Road. Imagine that they are Road.
So even the people that are using Drive, it, it comes as Road?
Go to the Patriot Properties and see what it says. You gotta, you can see the whole street in a second.
Tax bills, water mills, excise buildings, all come through the road, or road in your motorway.
We can see it right here. We can
So there's Road.
Yeah, so that's
GIS system says Road.
Road.
Road. Another property card. Road. I just think it's important to try to clear up that, that issue.
Well, at the moment, the town records read Road.
Right. And, you know, as I mentioned before, the subdivision plan that was approved.
But here's the point. If we leave it Road, nothing's going to change. These people are still going to have Deep Pond Drive and their driver's license. We're still going to have all these same issues. We're not going to fix a thing.
No.
We will have reaffirmed Road.
Yeah, so what? It's still going to be the same problem.
Either way you go, there's going to be a problem. Because the people who believe that they're, their paperwork
That was my point. We're not
Yeah, either way.
We can't fix this.
I make a motion to deny changing the road to Deep Pond Drive.
And I believe that was seconded.
The official name.
Right. So is there any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to deny. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Denied. There'll be no change as a result of what happened here tonight. If you want to change, you can always come back.
I don't think they need to. I don't think it's a problem.
They may not, but it's their option. So, at last, moving on. Okay. Public meeting. The applicant is NICA Development LLC, continued. Site plan application for an increase in parking and an increase of over 500 square feet, gross floor area at 259 and 263 Old Main Street, and a continuance has been requested. Kevin? Mr. Clower?
Sir? We did request a continuance. We are back before the historical commission. Just give them a second.
I don't, I don't mind hearing kids squeal in the background because they're not mine. So
It's a nice change of pace.
I heard, I heard these little voices throughout the whole
Yeah. And I was like, I just kept smiling because I'm like, it's not mine.
Right, not ours, all right.
Um, we did request a continuance. We are back before historical. We made really nice progress at, at the November historical meeting. We have some revised plans. And we're back for historical next Tuesday, which is December
Six.
Sixth, thank you. So we've requested a continuance until the December 13th hearing, assuming you're going to move forward that night. Is that still the plan? Because I know, I saw one of the agenda items was the December hearing schedule. So we've requested a continuance until December 13th. Because what we'd like to do is hopefully obtain approval from historical, which will, I, I think will address a lot of the board's concerns relative to the design of the structures, and then come back before this board.
Right. And an extension of the decision deadline till the 31st?
And that was requested as well.
Yeah. So could we hear a motion? Anyone?
I'll move to continue.
To December 13th?
Yeah, to, NICA Development LLC Corp's site plan review, continue to December 13th, 2022.
And extend the deadline to December 31st?
And extend the deadline to December 31st.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, now we're on to our discussion items. The first of these
I have a quick question for Kevin.
Yeah.
Kevin, are you and all the stars of Cape Cod Christmas going to be out for the stroll again this year?
I mean, you know, the grand, the grand
Sorry about that.
Really? You don't look stoned at all.
I watched Cape Cod Christmas with my granddaughter last night. You played a very important role.
Well, you know, they were very clear in filming that it was a non-union drive. There's no sag car that's available. I was a non-speeding roll, so no sag cars. But I'm waiting for the sequel.
Yeah.
No bill of allowance.
No. Guys, I'm ready to act.
Thank you. Okay, before we begin the discussion, we received, did you all get a copy of the site visit date?
Yes.
Okay, so I hope you can all make it.
This is Friday.
December 2nd at noon, Blue Moon Road. So that's, that's going to happen.
Give me a second. That's Friday.
Planning board discussion. First up is 63 Andrews Street. The ADU modification, something you wanted to say about that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you may remember, this applicant was before the board back in May and received site plan review approval from you folks for this ADU. In summary, and to be brief, what they proposed to do is essentially construct an accessory dwelling unit above the existing garage, as seen on the plan here. Subsequent to that approval, they decided to seek the building commissioner's approval of a covered walkway addition, which would essentially attach the existing dwelling to the garage and therefore make the accessory dwelling unit no longer detached, but now attached. And so they did get that approval from the building commissioner, and with Charlotte's approval, the chairman's approval, we typed up a, basically a very summary, a very brief approval letter indicating that this is now an attached ADU, and they would no longer need to seek approval from the ZBA for a special permit. As you know, that would be required for a detached accessory dwelling unit. So, and no changes were made to the accessory dwelling unit. All the, the only change was this addition.
And this, what he's just said is, just to inform you of what happened to that afterwards.
So it's just a matter of information for tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next will be committee, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Next, committee reports. Should we consider this Water Quality Management Committee? It is the report.
Yep.
Are you making this report?
If you're on it.
I'm all for it.
What about special projects? Okay, I guess we skipped a minute. Special projects, the town plan update?
We're coming to that.
Okay.
I attend the Water Quality Management Committee meeting as a representative of the planning board, and I've been doing that for quite a while. And the issues come up with the proposed changes to the DEP Title V regulations. We talked about this some weeks ago, but the meeting last week was very important for a number of reasons. It was well-attended. There were at least three members of the select board, a state representative, two health departments were there, and some other people. And it was a very detailed, very lengthy presentation. It was prepared by Science Wares on behalf of the Water Quality Management Committee. So I took the liberty of taking a couple of those slides out, rather than go through the entire thing. It was very, very long. So I'd like to go through that quickly. Basically, DEP is making proposed changes that severely affect the town of Falmouth. Falmouth has 14 impacted estuaries, 40% of Cape Cod. So we're clearly one of the big towns that have been affected by this. Next one. There it is. And they provide two options. One is, within five years, every system within a nitrogen-sensitive areas must incorporate the best available nitrogen-reducing technology. And that's an important consideration there because a lot of the technologies have not been proven or approved by DEP. So it creates a real dilemma for a lot of different people. This is what it looks like. These are the areas that would have to be impacted by that. It's most of the town, so it's a very significant thing. And DEP, or I should say, Water Quality Management Committee, made some cost estimates to, to implement Option 1. The average cost of an IA is about $30,000. And there's 15,000, over 15,000 unsourced parcels will be affected by this. Do the numbers, $450 million installed and paid for by property owners by 2028. Is that reasonable? So what are the real concerns? Can DEP mandate upgrades to these currently installed and permitted systems within five years? Can they grant, limit grandfathering? Do they have any demonstration, data demonstrating that these IA systems would achieve their objectives? There's some doubt on that. Does it have other fines, enforcement fines? Or what are they going to do about it? What if somebody doesn't do it? Is there enough capacity to even build these things? So there's some real serious issues about it. Option 2 is, within 18 months, the town must file a notice of intent to apply watershed permits for 14 Falmouth estuaries. And that must have a plan to reach 75% of the TMDLs in the estuaries. What's that cost? Great Pond targeted watershed management plan will cost $250,000, that area alone. Falmouth needs to complete these comprehensive plans for seven watersheds, and then apply for permits for these watersheds. So it's not an easy process. It's a very complicated and lengthy process. What's the schedule and cost? 14 estuaries and two neighbors, all within six and a half years. Can you really do that? And a cost example, Great Pond only, based on the town plan for collection systems alone, you've added them all up, is $100 million. So it's a very, very expensive proposition. What is Falmouth doing now? And that's important because it appears that DEP does not recognize the efforts made by the town of Falmouth over the years. What, what the town is doing is addressing the most impacted estuaries first. Use alternatives where feasible. So are high-density peninsulas near estuaries. Use drop-off for financing and implement in phases called adaptive management. So what has Falmouth paid for to date? $15 million for its treatment plan upgrades, $50 million for low pond sewer, $25 million for the upgrades that were approved this year, and approximately $60 million targeted for 2024. That's $150 million that the town of Falmouth has spent. The town of Bourne has done zero. They've made no efforts to address any of these issues. So what has Falmouth done? Falmouth's implemented the plan with no federal, state funding. We've done it with our own money. We have a record of success with town meeting and voters who support the plan that's being done. Watershed permits would start and, set the clock and delay implementation. Option 1 is $450 million. Option 2 is another $100 million for only one estuary. And a significant more cost than the 14 other estuaries. So it's a big number. So what, what is the course of action? So what, what is the course of action? Select board, border health, water quality, DPW, and the planning board should submit written responses by the 15th of December. That's a cutoff date to respond to this. There's a series of meetings going on. You can see where they are, some in person and so forth. But what the Water Quality Management Committee would like to do, rather than fight this in courts and do something legally, explore legal options, propose option three. That is more convenient for the town of Falmouth based on what's been done already. Look for negotiation mediation with DPW to do that. What's the summary of this? Falmouth has 14 nitrogen impacted estuaries. DEP does not appear to recognize the efforts made by the town of Falmouth. Falmouth has a logical, implementable plan. Falmouth's committed already $150 million. And the two options appear to be unreasonable and may be impossible to, to meet the goals of the timeframe. So what should this board do? Town's preparing option three, due on December 15th, to recognize these activities as, as a reasonable and achievable and request a letter from the planning board in support of that, one that's been developed and reviewed by council. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Didn't we read something in the enterprise about the town having decided not to support the DEP and to...
It's a pretty good article.
Yeah. Town officials oppose the state's denitrification proposal. I don't know if you all saw this. Yeah, so Paul, you're proposing then that we sign on to option three and get a letter of support for it once they have it?
Once they develop what they're trying to do, and they're trying to do that, but the timeframe is short. We only have one meeting before that. So I wanted to alert this board that there is some effort should be made by us to support what the Water Quality Management Committee is doing and see if we can come up with a reasonable option that makes sense.
Any reactions?
Yeah, why isn't anything being done by the state or the federal government? Because this isn't, I mean, Falmouth, just because we have these 14 estuaries, why should we be solely responsible for them when we have all kinds of people that come and use our facility, which is the town and the Cape? Has anybody reached out to our state senators, our state reps as far as doing something about this? Because, you know, from your report saying that Falmouth has done all this and Bourne has done zip, I wonder what the other towns are doing? And if it can't be statewide, then maybe countywide or something? I, I just feel that we're being put upon because of the location and what we have for geography here.
Well, Representative David Viero is very vocal about, in opposition to this and very much supported the option proposed by Falmouth. So that's one way of getting into the state to have them look at it. But he did attend the meeting and he was very much supportive of what DP, of what Water Quality Management Committee is trying to do. You know, don't fight it. Come up with an option that makes sense. Because it really doesn't recognize what Falmouth has done.
And come up with money for it, too.
Well, Falmouth has a unique situation here and we'll bear in the burnt of this.
Right.
No question about it.
Right. And I think it's high time the, the state kicked in, too.
So what I propose we do is if we can't have a, some kind of solution by next week, next meeting, maybe we can agree that the chair should be able to sign a letter on behalf of the board in support of what they come up with. I'm worried about the timing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any reaction to that?
I agree 100%.
Great. Pam, did you want to say something?
No, but I mean, I, I agree. Here you have this relatively small community surrounded by other communities with the same issues that we have. And yet it always boils down to, well, what are you going to do? Even if no one else around you is doing anything.
The way I would read what the DEP is doing, that of course is the state, is the state is pushing the costs onto the localities.
Right.
I doubt that they're expecting a positive reaction. So it's possible the DEP is trying to rouse people up to demand the state legislature to take some action that would be funding this. Because there are, if you think about it, yeah, we're coastal, but not all the water in Massachusetts is coastal. So it's not just us. So I think the DEP is really expecting a response along those lines. John?
I did want to mention, I attended a meeting about a month ago here at Town Hall regarding this same. The DEP had not given their, their mandate yet. And there were some representatives from Barnstable and I think Harwich at the meeting. And they said that Falmouth has been doing a good job. And there's also some testing results from Little Pond that's been soured. And the results, the preliminary results are really, really good.
That's right.
As far as removing the nitrous.
Yeah.
And they tested each, each portion of the, of Little Pond and it got better and better and better. So.
So you would...
That's only, I think it's only been soured for about two years.
Yeah.
So the searing is the right way to go here.
Well, it would seem then that you, you agree that including what we've done so far.
Oh, absolutely.
In our, in our response is an important thing. Almost, you know, if I were going to draft the letter, I wouldn't really emphasize that because it looks like, gee, you're already paying for it.
Yeah.
Keep on.
Yeah.
Whereas we really want the state to step forward and take some responsibility for, it's a regional problem, it's a statewide problem.
Yeah.
Right, so where's this letter going to come from, Paul?
Well, we'll have to get a draft from them and then have you review it.
So Paul, where's this connection? Oh, okay.
Sorry? I have a question. I'd like to see if we even have a, a choice. Does it really matter? It looks like the, this is an unfunded mandate coming from the state. You know, what does the little town board have? I'm all set for opposing it, but if, if they've already said they're going to do this, I think we're going to have to settle this in court.
No, this is definitely labeled a proposal. It's like football. Here's the ball, what you going to do?
They're proposing to do this? Well, that's impossible. Is it, we went really quickly over whether it's grandfathered or not. That, that was really unclear. It might not even be legal what they're, they're saying that they can do. All these people that have spent millions of dollars putting in septic systems and now they're going to be told they have to redo them on existing homes without putting anything new. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Well, I would have to recuse myself because they're coming after me. I'm on one of these systems, so I'm biased right away. So is half the people in the town. It's going to be crazy. The biggest fight you'd ever, I don't, write the letter.
We're being invited to join the fight.
Yeah, we're, we're all in. It's crazy.
I think the point is that the Water Quality Management Committee would like to negotiate and propose a third option because the two options they're proposing may not achieve what they're trying to do. It may not be able to be done in the timeframe they're talking about, and it may not be able to be funded.
My understanding is we have no proof that the Title V's, the Title, I mean, these denitrification systems even work.
Couple of them do.
We have heard right here on this board that they don't work.
I think you gave us a presentation or John did, it only like...
Three.
Three, three, the whole town. And now we're going to mandate you have to put them in?
Yeah, that's right.
What a gut, what a country.
Okay, so yes, we're, we're all...
I think one of the things that John says is important, too, is that the meeting he went to, I was at also. And not only did they look at Little Pond, but have done all this sampling since then. And there are some very positive results as a result of that project. So Falmouth is making a lot of progress, investing a lot of money and doing a lot more than other communities who are equally impacted.
Well, look at all the communities that are connected to MWRA and what that has done for Boston Harbor.
Yeah.
And those people, you know, they had to foot the bill for it, which I felt was unfair. Some, some communities even more so than others. But searing is the way to go. And I don't know why it's been such a fight. I mean, we could have had it done for free back in the 40s when the government wanted to do it for us and we said, oh, we don't need it.
Be obsolete, no. So we're in agreement then?
Not really, not, not really.
I, I think the bottom line is that this is a very important issue for the town. And I think we, as a board, should take a stand on it as well as the other communities, other committees in town.
We're agreeing with you.
Yeah.
And we're going to deal with the letter.
And the first thing Romulus and Remus did is put an aqueduct in a sewer. I mean, really?
Something he's still there?
And they, yeah, and they're still there.
Okay, we ready to move on?
My 10 minutes is up.
Yes. It is.
We've got aqueducts.
We're still on committee reports. Are there any other committee reports? No. We skipped right over special projects, which we are not going to skip over. This is a prioritization issue. Jed, do you want to speak on this?
I certainly do. And you folks saw this list of projects back in early November. So nothing has changed. It's just a simple duplication of what you talked about at that point. But what I heard from that meeting was you were looking for a sense for prioritization as well as a timetable for some of these projects. So I wanted to provide you an opportunity to either, it's really up to you. I can provide a brief summary of each one of these. There's 11 in total. And we can walk through them individually or you can ask me questions about where they're at. It's really up to you to decide on how you want to go about this conversation. But we figured we'd take 10 minutes to just talk about all this, the work that's going on and get a sense from you how you want to prioritize our time.
Okay, perhaps everyone here had the same reaction to it because we've had this list now for at least two weeks. And I went through and gave it, my, it was my understanding from Jed that these were prioritized from the point of view of the planning department. I went through and gave it my priorities, which are different from that. But I was not aware, some of them seemed to be things that demand involvement of the board or could use involvement of the board, and others seemed to be staff dependent projects. So we're really not in a position as a board to tell you what your workload is or, or to prioritize it for you.
Certainly, but getting a sense from, from you on the, the ones that you're most involved in would help us understand how we prioritize our time, too. Especially, you know, just the first one, I think, is, is a great example of this idea of the Mr. Cod growth incentive zone. We understand that, the planning staff understands that to be one of the top priorities of the board. And so we intend to bring to you either at the next meeting or a following meeting, essentially a summary of what we have discovered about the district in our conversations with the committee commission. Meanwhile, we're working on the open space and rent plan. So that, that work is already underway. However, we will need to basically pick up the ball, if you will, because our consultants are only on contracts until the end of December. And then it's our responsibility to bring that ball across the end zone. So I guess there's a little bit more information that, you know, I can probably provide for each one of these.
On each one, but...
To give you a sense.
Let me, would it help you if each member of the board were to just give you their top three?
That would be great.
Would that be, okay, let, you ready to do that?
Okay.
If each, each one of us tell the planning department what our own top priorities would be, that will help them in organizing their work. So if you could take a look for a minute and decide.
Can I give you one quick update?
Yes.
On this list? The Edward Marks Building?
Yep.
So last, last year, town meeting approved some funding for one portion of the exterior repairs. CPC is requesting a second round of funding for another portion of the exterior of the building for April town meeting.
Great.
And, and there, we always have oversight from CPC. So I don't know how much the planning board needs to get involved with that, but...
It wouldn't seem so. If they're, if they're applying for it, they must have faced their cost estimates on pretty firm plans.
Yes, and that's, that's under the historic.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of oversight.
Yeah, the reason I added it to the list is because we staff the historic commission and I also help the Edward Marks Advisory Committee with those applications with all the paperwork. So it's another...
Are you going to write the application?
I'm helping them do that. And then helping, helping them facilitate the way through the process, too. So it's, it's another responsibility that I have.
Yeah, but it was pretty well along. That's been in the works for a long time. Okay, well, who would like to start with his, these are her three top ones?
I got three.
You got three?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
My first one would be Mr. Cod. Second one would be zoning recodification. And then three is a tie between design guidelines and form-based code because I think they go hand in hand.
Okay, good, thank you.
I second the exact same thing.
Exactly the same?
Yep.
Okay, so Mr. Cod, design guidelines, zoning bylaw, and form-based management, based zoning. John, do you want to go now? Are you ready?
I would agree with the first two, but for the third one, I would prefer to have Shiverick's Pond. I think it's really important to move that forward and it would be great.
So you put design guidelines in one and two, and then Shiverick's Pond?
Yes. Love to see that get completed. It's been in the works now for several years and a lot of work has been done, but the completion will be wonderful for the town family.
It will.
I was going to build a fishing platform.
Paul?
Yeah, I had slightly different suggestions. One is recodification, I think, is an important element, has to move forward. I put that one. The subdivision rules and regulations, I had two. And local comprehensive plan update, I had three. As much as I'd like to say Shiverick's Pond, I don't think that's, that's really an effort outside the board.
I missed it. Three was...
Zoning bylaw, recodification.
And...
Subdivision rules and regulations update, and local comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay, got it.
You know, I look at some of these, like the Edward Marks Building is, I wonder even why the planning department is involved in that project.
Because the historical commission's support comes under the planning department.
It's his time of approval.
Right.
But...
It's okay.
Our staff provides everything for historic.
Yeah.
Right, we're sharing. Pam?
Yep. I, um...
Be careful now.
I would really love someone to do a presentation on the actual differences between a master plan and an LCP because I've been doing a lot of reading and I think there's a lot greater difference than we have talked about. We've been minimizing it, but I think the master plan is a far more detailed. It has protections in it, as I look at them, in terms of the state. So that's number one for me. The mixed residential, commercial overlay district and the... And the design guidelines. I think we can't really go much further without those design guidelines. I think that's really important.
Okay, so I am in agreement with Bob, Jim, and John and Paul on Mr. Cod. My second one is the design guidelines. I certainly agree and Pam stated it very, very well. Third, the zoning bylaw recodification, which I think we already have, getting a contract in place now to get that going again. So that's going to get going. And the, the LCP. Those would be one.
You were supposed to give three and you gave four.
Oh, all right, I cheated. Well, the first person who spoke decided on it.
We're going to start over. I set precedent.
I was drinking.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I thought this report was excellent, special projects update. I've not seen that before. It's dated November 1st, so obviously some of the things in here are not current.
Correct.
Like town meeting, obviously, cut already, but... And I would propose we do something like this maybe every quarter or something like that for an update for the board, not every month. But perhaps every quarter, give a special projects update. I think that would be very helpful to me as a member of the board without putting too much burden on you.
Yeah, that, that can be done.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and, and one, another little footnote, some of them, I sort of, I would prefer just to get regular updates because some of them are very close. I think you have to have your open space and rent plan pretty soon anyway, so we'd get an update on that. Finding out what's happening with Mr. Cod, who's applying and what's going on. We got regular updates. And the Shiverick's Pond thing was so close now. Just getting, you know, as a, as a matter of...
I hope I live long enough to see it.
You will. I hope you do, too, Paul. So I'll hang.
We're going to get you there.
You need to decide when we wish to meet in December.
Wait, I'd like to, we have future agenda items? I have one I'd like to discuss.
Did we get there yet?
No, if you go to next meeting, you skipped over future agenda items.
No, it's, it's the, this one here.
December, planning board meeting schedule?
Oh, okay, committee meeting, so I'm, I'm sorry. So I thought you said next meeting, the next committee meeting.
No. It's what do we do about our schedule in December because of Christmas? And the recommendation comment, we have three options. One meeting on the thirteenth, two meetings, thirteenth and twentieth, or stay with the thirteenth and twenty-seventh and just live with it. What's your preference? Anyone wish to?
I'd like to hear Jed's preference and Melinda's preference, because the ones that...
Hear Jed's preference?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, I think we're confident that we don't have too many applications in the queue, so we could likely do with just one meeting in December, the thirteenth.
Okay, I like that.
That would give you three weeks, I think that is, three weeks until the next meeting, which would be, actually, maybe four weeks. So there's quite a span in between.
Could you be working?
Absolutely. And if something were to come in, obviously, we would communicate with the chair and the need for a meeting. But I don't see the need...
The AR.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I don't see the need to meet on the twenty-seventh, and like I mentioned to some of you earlier, was that week is typically vacation week for a lot of folks. So even if we were to meet, I'm not sure that we would get the public attendance that we'd be...
Okay, so everyone comfortable with meeting just the once?
Yep, December thirteenth.
I don't think we need a motion on that. Now, time for announcements. Does anyone have...
Thirteenth and, when would it be in January?
The tenth.
The tenth.
Tenth.
Wow, good vacation. Okay, any announcements, anyone? No. I would have something I would like to bring up. I don't think it's an announcement. One of the select board members got in touch with me in connection with what he regards as an issue the town needs to address, and felt that the planning board should be thinking about it. And I agree, really. It's the issue of how much rental opportunities we are losing to short, the short-term rentals. Right, so VRBO and what's the bed and breakfast one? Too many houses are going in that direction, and how are we going to regulate them? And we would not be the first community to be addressing this issue. You can Google it, short-term rentals, how are they being regulated? People around the country have been grappling with this. Some have come up with some solutions you could take a look at, and maybe we could start thinking about it. Because it really ties directly to our affordable housing options, how many we have here in town. So maybe that's like a future agenda item. Would there be any others?
Were we talking future agenda items?
Yes.
Yes. I just became aware, I sent you something today on it, I just heard about today, that there's a new investment tax credit for batteries that are not connected to solar. They're basically just batteries that work off the grid, so that somebody on a commercial property could turn it into a battery warehouse, take power off the grid, and then put it back in again. And it would catch the solar, but it would catch, it would be not tied to the solar. And so I would just want to ask Jed to take a look at our zoning and see if there's anywhere in town that our zoning would allow that type of use. And if there isn't, it's something I think we should consider supporting, because both solar and wind are totally useless without battery backup. I mean, it, we, you know, the wind stops blowing and the sun sets and the things shut down, so we have to have coal plants and gas plants as backup anyway. If we don't solve it with the battery issue, I don't think there is another solution. And I think they go in industrial areas. I think it would have to be a special permit. They're not, you know, they're generators, you know, power generators. If they, they're just like any other power generator, they got, they should be in an industrial area. But I don't know if it fits in any of our zoning. I don't know if it fits in our solar overlay district. I don't know, actually, I want our board to ask Jed to do a review and see if it fits anywhere, and if it doesn't, I think we should consider a bylaw making it someplace, maybe at least in the solar overlay district or someplace.
I looked at what you sent, and I couldn't understand, is this so you could pirate electricity? You just drain it off the system?
No. You could set up a generating system, take the, charge up your batteries during regular usage, and then sell it back to the grid at a different time, and you'd make money on the differential, because you have the batteries. We need the battery backup. It's a way of getting private money to invest in battery backup.
You already sent it to Jed, right?
I just sent it to you.
Oh.
But it's, he should know about it, it's out there.
I'll send it to you, and you can send it around, people can look at it. But I didn't understand, how could it possibly even be legal? You're just draining electricity out of the system. But we can find out later.
Everyone's allowed to use power.
Ken, is it commercial?
Yeah. And the main thing is, is the federal government, Joe Biden passed it in this, in the recent inflation cure.
That's not a jackpots.
No, but that's where it came from. It's a thirty percent investment tax credit, but that's how we did the landfill. The landfill was done with federal government. It wasn't, you know, it's thirty percent tax credit, it's a huge benefit, and I think it would help renewable energy. It solely would just help renewable energy quite a bit.
Once everyone has a copy of it, we can take a look at it?
Well, what I sent is just an example. I think what, I think I'd rather have Jed go look at it and see. That was from Canada, it's not the exact same thing. It's just the idea of having a battery system that isn't tied to a solar or a wind plant that it could stand on its own and do the same thing. That's the difference.
Canadian kilowatts different than American kilowatts, you know, currency?
I just became aware of it today. I just wanted to...
Oh, Paul?
You know, there are a number of options like that that were being considered over the years. One is pump storage, where they use off-peak hours to pump water up to a reservoir. And then as it comes down, they can use it to generate electricity. And that's been done out west in a number of areas.
But I don't know if that's an us...
It's not us. That's, I'm just saying, there's a lot of innovative things. Another, Duke Energy, years ago, used to have a program where you could sign up and you agreed to limit your electrical use during certain peak periods of the day. You know, turn off your air conditioner during a period of time or something like that. And that was working very effectively. I've not seen that out here or very extended area. There's a lot of innovative things that can be done in addition to what you're talking about.
Well, this is clearly a zoning issue. It's whether it's a use that's allowed anywhere, yes or no. That's really the question.
Okay, and we should look into it.
I'm asking...
And I'll send Jed the stuff I have on the regulating short-term rentals to share among the board members, and you could take a look at that and start, you know, thinking, what sounds feasible for Falmouth.
Can I just make a comment for your close? This whole conversation on selecting the priorities going forward, I think it was all confusing where it was done. Perhaps you can help the recording secretary to get that discussion down, because I think it would be very difficult to follow what happened. You made notes on the priorities and so forth. It'd be helpful to have that in the minutes, and it may be hard to get that from the recording.
Did you mark who said what? I'm sure you did.
We have it already, I have it already.
Yeah, I thought so.
Maybe you talk to her and make sure she gets that right. Thank you.
Yeah, they're very efficient.
Oh, she's very good, but it was difficult to follow. If we had a better leader, it would have been easier.
But they're younger than us, Paul.
Right, you're absorbed. So could we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.